We'll move on to presentations. We recognize and welcome Susan Desirca of GSI Water Solutions to provide an overview of our source water protection plan. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be here and pleased to be sharing the source water plan that the city and the community members have been working on for more than a year. So, as you mentioned, I'll be providing an overview, some background on it and the process, as well as talking about the different components of the plan. So, some of the overall goals of the plan are to reduce risks to the city's primary drinking water source, Jettie Creek. And I'll go into some other additional goals that fall under that. But first, I just wanted to share a map right here with you of the Jettie Creek watershed, which is in that beige color, and you can see the different waterways that combine to make Jettie Creek. Also on the map, it shows groundwater in the green and some yellow dots. So, the focus of the plan is on the Jettie Creek watershed. There are other planning processes that are happening in the city to address groundwater. So, the plan doesn't really go into that very much, but what I'll be talking about going forward here is the Jettie Creek watershed and planning around that. So, to provide everyone with some background, back in 2016, the Department of Environmental Quality developed a source water assessment that provided an update on potential threats to the city's water supply in the Jettie Creek watershed, in that source water area, and described other characteristics of the watershed, which is a great resource for the city to draw from. Around that same time, community interest had been building in source protection, and over time, the city began discussing land acquisition with the Jettie Creek watershed landowners. So, as part of the land acquisition process, the city was interested in developing source water protection plans to help inform the process. The source water protection plan supports the land acquisition goal and then also the source water protection goals that the city has. With that in mind, the city went after funding that Oregon Health Authority offered through the Drinking Water Source Protection Fund and was awarded that funding, and that funding has supported this planning process. So, the planning began in 2024. The city developed a source water protection plan development advisory committee, and this committee was tasked with reviewing the different documents that are produced in the process and providing Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conroth.
Yes.
Councillor Martens.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to presentations. We recognize and welcome Susan Desirca of GSI Water Solutions to provide an overview of our source water protection plan. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be here and pleased to be sharing the source water protection plan that the city and the community members have been working on for more than a year. So I, as you mentioned, I'll be providing an overview, some background on it and the process, as well as talking about the different components of the plan. So some of the overall goals of the plan are to reduce risks to the city's primary drinking water source, Jettie Creek. I'll go into some other additional goals that fall under that. But first, I just wanted to share a map right here with you of the Jettie Creek watershed, which is in that beige color, and you can see the different waterways that combine to make Jettie Creek. Also, on the map, it shows groundwater in the green and some yellow dots. So the focus of the plan is on the Jettie Creek watershed. There are other planning processes that are happening in the city to address groundwater. So the plan doesn't really go into that very much, but what I'll be talking about going forward here is the Jettie Creek watershed and planning around that. So to provide everyone with some background, back in two thousand and sixteen, the Department of Environmental Quality developed a source water assessment that provided an update on potential threats to the city's water supply in the Jettie Creek watershed, in that source water area, and described other characteristics of the watershed, which is a great resource for the city to draw from. Around that same time, community interests had been building in source protection, and over time, the city began discussing land acquisition with the Jettie Creek watershed landowners. So as part of the land acquisition process, the city was interested in developing source water protection plans to help inform the process. The source water protection plan supports the land acquisition goal and then also the source water protection goals that the city has. With that in mind, the city went after funding that Oregon Health Authority offered through the Drinking Water Source Protection Fund and was awarded that funding, and that funding has supported this planning process. So the planning began in two thousand and twenty four. The city developed a source water protection plan development advisory committee, and this committee was tasked with reviewing the different documents that are produced in the process and providing input along the way on the information being developed. The city also formed a source water protection plan team consisting of local community stakeholders and technical experts, including landowners in the watershed. The city also held two town hall meetings, one in September, two thousand and twenty four, and the other in March, two thousand and twenty five, to gather additional input from community members. The plan consists of four components. One is risks, and this is, again, an identification of potential risks and also a prioritization, and I'll go into that in more detail. Another section is the strategies. So now that some risks are identified, how do we address them? Implementation plan, now that we've got the strategies, how do we implement those strategies? A contingency plan, thinking about what the city would do in the event of a major loss in water supply, and then a future planning section. So what are some potential future water sources? For the risk assessment process, risks were identified by drawing on the source water assessment and by drawing from knowledge held by the source water protection plan development advisory committee, the team, and the community. And then the risks were grouped into different categories by land use or activity or source. For risk prioritization, a scale was used. This is the matrix that consists of looking at the impact on a scale of one to five and looking at likelihood on a scale of one to five. So likelihood would be for a five, almost certain, versus a one, rare, and for impacts, catastrophic at a five versus a one insignificant. The purpose of the prioritization was to really inform the implementation plan to help with strategizing how and which ones are really critical to address right away. Those would be the high priority ones. So just to give you a taste, the risk categories fell into kind of natural hazards, forestry, and municipal, and here are listed some of the specific risks under each of those categories. So like landslides and wildfire under natural hazards, for instance. And then you'll see some numbers with some color coding, and those were the scores that were developed through this process. And the red indicates the high, the yellow indicates the moderate, and then the the green indicates the low. Another two categories were land use, so that includes things like creation and then demands on water supply. But although it's not in the watershed, considerations of how potentially uses outside the watershed demand could affect the water supply were also considered. And then the risks needed to be addressed somehow, and the group developed a list of strategies, and those strategies were grouped under these major categories, and I'll go through each one. So one strategy is critical area protection, specifically land acquisition or conservation placement, which, as I mentioned earlier, the city's already been pursuing. And the focus of that is that it really enables management for drinking water quality and quantity versus other land management goals. Some other strategies included data collection and monitoring, and that includes things like tracking watershed conditions over time, tracking water quality and quantity. Another strategy, watershed restoration, this has two components that the group focused on, and that was enhancing water retention in the watershed, which could be through beavers or through other storage, natural or built, and then enhancing water quality. And there are a variety of ways, such as repairing buffers, putting more large woody pieces into streams, and then invasive species removal. Sediment and erosion control is another strategy, and turbidity can be an issue at times during the year in Jettie Creek, so looking at conditions, steep slopes, landslide potential. Another part of that strategy is looking at rodent culprit maintenance and working with landowners on these issues. And I'll just touch on a few points under these other strategies. So for water supply and emergency planning, trying to integrate source water protection into planning efforts moving forward, having to do with emergency planning or infrastructure planning, water management conservation plans, thinking about preparedness for disaster and climate change, and also thinking about what the needs will be in the city moving forward for development or for tourism. For community and public engagement, just continuing to communicate with the landowners through various means, talking about management, talking about data, and continuing the Jettie Creek Working Group and continuing to engage the public. And then the final strategy, water conservation measures, and that can be approached in several ways. One is through outreach to the community, through various means of communication, holding events as well, and also reaching non-community members, people who may be visiting, and trying to share the message about conservation. There's ordinances, reviewing ordinances for opportunities to encourage water conservation in the low post, for instance. Infrastructure, looking at leak detection and repair opportunities and other types of maintenance. So the next step was the implementation plan, and this, with the different strategies, could be grouped into essentially three phases of implementation. So thinking about it is phase one being the most immediate, high-risk or high-priority risks to be addressed. That would fall under phase one, as well as collecting data, developing partnerships, and really getting things going to try to implement those strategies. Phase two is really about strengthening partnerships. It's about furthering the planning process, securing that funding and some early implementation steps. And then phase three is really looking at continuing all the work done in previous phases, as well as looking at some of the low priority risks. So I'll just give a few highlights of phase one. I won't go into phase two or three, but to give you just a sense of what implementation could look like, for critical area protection, that would be planning for acquisitions, developing a broad forest stewardship plan, so really diving in and doing that work for data collection and monitoring would be inventorying what kind of data the city has and what kind of data it might need. For watershed restoration, it would be identifying those high-priority areas that would really benefit the watershed. And then for sediment and erosion control, again, thinking about areas where there's a lot of erosion potential and trying to develop projects to reduce the erosion and conducting studies to learn more about the watershed erosion potential. For water supply and emergency planning, an example would be thinking about future water needs and exploring alternative sources. For communications and public engagement, one would be continuing to have those conversations with the landowners in the watershed and to communicate with the public about source water protection. Water conservation measures, a couple implementation actions would be to continue the water loss work, the water loss of production work that the city has been engaged in, and then exploring funding for additional conservation measures beyond what has been done, and identifying partnerships could be part of that. So yeah, that's a taste of different actions that could be taken. And then again, phase two and phase three is just continuing those efforts and then addressing some of the lower priority ones. For the contingency plan, this is, again, focused on scenarios where water may be reduced or become unavailable. This has a number of elements that needed to be addressed, required as part of this plan, and a lot of the information used to address those different elements listed in those bullets came from the emergency operations plan developed by the city and its water management conservation plan, which has a water curtailment plan in it. So just a few of the elements that needed to be addressed included identifying key personnel, figuring out what are replacement water supplies in the short and the long term. So yes, there's water curtailment, but then maybe it's adjusting use of sources, or maybe it's something related to infrastructure. For conservation measures, the curtailment plan talks about under different stages stages of curtailment that increase in severity, there are different sets of conservation measures that could be implemented. And then it talks about some other things like training logistics. And then the final section is the future water sources. So the planning period of this document is twenty years. It really focused on that time period. The Water Management Conservation Plan covers, the current one from two thousand and twenty covers a lot of that, but still there are a few years gap. So things change over time as well, and the city has no immediate plans for expansion of the water system, but will be thinking about the water demands, future water demands, and future water supply sources in updates to its Water Master Plan and its Water Management Conservation Plan. And then some potential additional future water sources that were mentioned in that two thousand and twenty Water Management Conservation Plan include considering water rights that are held in reserve and potential interconnections. So the next steps, now that this final draft has been developed, is to seek city council approval, and then the next step would be to submit the plan to the Oregon Health Authority and Department of Environmental Quality for review.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your time. We did have an opportunity to chat with you at the workshop, so you're welcome to be on your way or stay and enjoy the rest of our council meeting. Thanks.
I just want to say before you leave, I said it up there, but I want to say it again. Thank you to the great work that you did with this. I attended, I think, all but one of the monthly meetings they had, and I also want to thank the Citizens Advisory Committee. Mayor Charles was on it. Alicia Franken was our councillor liaison, and and the rest of the members were volunteers from the community, and it was stellar work, and it feels really nice to have a committee that puts so much energy and detail into this work. And also, I want to say that this was paid for by a grant that the city applied for from the E Q, so it didn't cost taxpayers here in Rockaway money, and we have a second grant to take the next step about management, and is that for sixty, seventy thousand or?
Yeah, you're in the right ballpark, and that'll fund the forest stewardship plan development. That's the next step that should roll out in the next month or two.
Well, thanks to our city staff for going after these grants and being able to do this work without a burden on the residents, but thank you so much for the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, the chair recognizes Fire Chief Todd Hesse to report on the fire department. Come on down.
Come on down. Love it. Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, Rockaway Beach. You have before you the Fire Department Council Report for the month of April, two thousand and twenty five. Seems like we're clicking right along this year. We'll start off with the run reports for the year so far. You know, nine-one-one calls did not slow down again in the month of April. There was thirty-seven nine-one-one calls. That puts us at a hundred and fifty-eight nine-one-one calls for the year so far. I put that a little bit in perspective. I looked at two thousand and twenty-one numbers, same date last, in two thousand and twenty-one, going to five-year span, we went from sixty-seven nine-one-one calls to a hundred and fifty-eight, or a two-hundred percent increase, and we're just, May is starting to kind of level off, which is, we'll take it because we know what's coming with the busy holiday season and the summer season. So we had thirty-seven point nine medical, four fire alarms, one structured fire, one water rescue, which is a little early, was not in our district, but we went and assisted with a water rescue, couple motor vehicle crashes. Training's got busy this month. We really been working on our fire operation stuff, which in a minute, I'll have a short PowerPoint up, and I'll show you a couple pictures of that. EMT class continues to go strong, surf rescue, our firefighter one class, we did some live fire last week, which they seem to really enjoy. Beach, we're getting on the beach some now. We were on there seven times last month, couple lift assists. Burn complaint season is upon us. We had four last month. So busy. Overall, total for, like I said, nine-one-one calls are a hundred and fifty-eight. We didn't reach that number even last year until middle of June. So we're way ahead of normal, which I'm not sure what normal is, but we'll just go with it. But two-hundred-and-seventy events for the year, keeping everybody hopping. Looking at a lot of rescue stuff and summer prep for the next month and training. Like I said, a couple times on the beach, really didn't have much interaction when we were out there, most of the time it raining, and when it's raining, most of the time, we don't have folks in the water or lighting fires, so there was some, a little bit of lull before the storm's coming. Still looking for volunteers for our emergency management program. If anybody's interested, please sign up. We had to cancel the May meeting due to scheduling for our preparedness meeting that's held here, but we will be holding our June meeting, June fourth, right here in this very room, first Wednesday at six o'clock, and it's going to be talking about wildfire safety and some of the tips and things you can do to help yourself, which I should say that May is wildfire prevention month. So we're, if you catch our webpage or Facebook page, we are getting some information out, but please show up June fourth, it'd be lots of fun interaction. You have to listen to me again, but it should be a good class anyway. We did participate in the shelter drill. Some of our cert members also participated in the cert drill with the Emergency Volunteer Corps in the Haylen Bay on May third. They had an open house and did drills. But if there's interest, there's other opportunities coming up to train you and to test your abilities. So please see Captain Grace or myself if you need more information. Like I say, we're getting ready for the summer season. The drone team has been doing an extraordinary amount of training, trying to really prepare and hone in their skills for any potential rescues or lost people this summer and are getting quite good at it. The ladder truck, I talked to our salesman last week when I was at the Oregon Fire Chief Conference, and they're still planning on a June delivery, but he hasn't given me a firm date yet. So some of those that are preparing for some of the festivities that may be coming up will give you a hard date as soon as we have something more concrete there, but they are working on it. And I have to also say that we had an open house on April nineteenth that was well-attended by the community, and we had over a hundred people stop by for pancakes. Thank you for the community members that assisted with facilitating that process, and we did have pancakes, and we did have a nice open house. And then we had the Easter egg hunt, which I do have a picture, will show you here in a minute, but I will say, I think we might set a new record, it was four minutes and thirty-five seconds. We timed them this year. Four minutes, thirty-five seconds from the time we hit the bell till every single, over four thousand Easter eggs were picked up. So they did do it. I'd like to see some improvement next year, but I was proud of the kids this year. It gives the next group a little something to work for. But it was a great, successful event, as it always is, and the community involvement is what really makes it happen, the community volunteers, and we appreciate everybody that helped. Other than that, I have a short PowerPoint, if it comes up here, we'll see. So I started this by just fire safety month, and I love that Oregon has adopted, somebody you might recognize there. Yeah, Bigfoot, I don't know if anyone's met him, but he's really big into fire safety, and it's our mascot. Everybody else has Smokey the Bear, we got Bigfoot, so we'll take it. So this is just a summary, a real quick summary. This is a picture from inside our burn trailer. When our, this is for the folks that don't get to experience it. This is our burn trailer. This is a flashover that we simulate for our crews. The ceiling temperature at this point is nine hundred degrees, so we get in that environment to practice our skills and observe that. So if you just want to, we practiced last month some extrication training for motor vehicle practice. We used somebody's car, we didn't rip the door off, but we did do all the skills that we would do to remove something from a car. We practiced last week with the car fire prop, so that's our propane fire propane prop, and so the crews get to get out, build some heat, and learn how to use approach a vehicle on fire. This is a picture of our drone. This is our pride and joy when it comes to summer rescues and what they're doing. You see that little camera on the front? That thing is a, we're going to get a couple examples, so that, go ahead. So this is up at four hundred feet, zoom back down at us, so you can see us pretty good, but this next picture is what I really like. This is our thermal camera in action. So we put our thermal camera on and took a picture of us, and I'd like, you can note a few things. And I'd like, you can note a few things. You can see the vehicles and the engine heat of the motors. You can see the folks standing around operating the drone. You can see our small drone below us. You'll notice a couple of figures that you can't see. That's because they have their wet suits on and it doesn't show through that. It's kind of, it was an interesting take to see how all that works. But that's how accurate our thermal camera is and how well it works. We don't just, as you know, we have an open house. We interact with our community a lot. This is the Future Natural Resource Leaders Club at Neocani High School. And we've been coaching them on progressive hose lanes for wildland fires. And we helped them with first aid skills. And this is after a competition they had at Neocani High School, which Neocani won. They just went to the state competition and placed third, which I was really, really happy with, but they've included us in their teaching. So we're going to do some first aid training with them, some fire safety, fire, actual fire skills. Actually went to a fire camp and learned all the wildland firefighting skills. So it's really a great program.
This is just part of the team. There's more.
I had a whole team picture, but I just wanted, this was the hose leg team from the day we went and helped them that was successful and that's their ribbons that we want. So they were really proud of themselves. Go ahead. And then I had to have a picture of the pancakes from the pancake feed. I did learn, if you feed people, they will come. And we had a great time. Those that attended got their fill of pancakes and sausages and had a great day. Easter Bunny showed up. We had a, that Easter Bunny usually tries to hide, but we did get a picture alongside one of our nine one one dispatches. So we worked very closely with our community partners and nine one one dispatch actually came and held a booth on the open house, which was a great addition to the crew. And this is the crew right before the four minutes and thirty five second timer run off. I thought it was well attended and really happy with the turnout. We did get a drone video of it. It just, I didn't think anybody wanted to watch four minutes and thirty five seconds, like little kids running around grabbing eggs. So, okay. Next, okay. I will put it up on our website or our Facebook page and you can watch your heart's content. And the last, the last one is just a flyer for the June fourth preparedness meeting. I encourage everybody to attend. There's a little bit there for everybody in this room. Whether you live along the forest or just in the middle of town, there's a lot of tips and tricks that we'll have for you. So June fourth, I'd like to see everybody and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say, I like the new Facebook post you put on about recruiting some more help on the crew. We've really been trying. And yeah, if you read our Facebook posts, we're looking for, we're looking for folks pretty aggressively. I got to tell you a little secret on that though. We're using that AI stuff to help generate those. I went to the chief's meeting last week and learned about technology and I got to learn about how that AI stuff works. Because it's, I'm not sure. I'll work on it. I'll get a report when I can. And just as a, we are working on that emergency management program still. We just, we'll get to you as soon as we can with the date of our presentation.
I have a couple of things. How do you notify about like the emergency management being, the meeting? How are you notified that it's canceled?
We put it.
I tried to come this month.
Oh.
I was like, it's a little turnout.
We put it on the, our Facebook page. I thought we put it on the calendar. We might not have.
Okay.
And if not, in future, we'll have it on the calendar between, yeah, there's no reason we shouldn't have. This month is on the calendar already and on our, and on our.
I'll shoot for you. And then a question is about the ladder truck.
Yes.
Are we going to do like a community?
I would hope that we could do a push-in ceremony for it to officially put it in service.
I know we've got a great volunteer group. That sounds like a.
Well, we got a great community too behind us here.
A lot of them are in that volunteer group.
But that's what we like to see is this, this community's interaction. We'd love to have an official ceremony.
It's a big deal.
It's a big deal.
Big deal.
Yes, it is.
I've heard the other towns talking about our big deal.
Where are the talk? Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Hesse. All right. The Chair recognizes Deputy Kevin Grogan to report for the Rockaway Beach Patrol.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So April brought a noticeable increase to criminal cases in Rockaway. A lot of them involving items being stolen from vehicles. So I've always stressed this in the past. Take your valuables with you. Lock your cars. Don't leave anything in sight. With all the extra people coming to town, it's pretty easy to smash and grab and be on your way. So we really want to make sure that people are taking care of their products and getting them out of the vehicle and not leaving it aside for anything of loss. Some notable cause for service this month include reports of juveniles using marijuana at the high school. A vehicle break-in involving a firearm and loss of several expensive electronics was reported. A male acting erratically was reported at the high school prior to the arrival of students for the day. The male was located and arrested. A disturbance involving domestic violence was reported in the Lake Lidl area. A female was arrested and the case was forwarded to the District Attorney's Office. And while on traffic overtime, one of our deputies was able to locate the driver that was called in by a local while driving. The driver was arrested for DUII in Rockaway Beach and we, yet again, community helping us out, making phone calls. We able to locate the driver and an arrest was made. So that's great for everybody here. We appreciate the help. A local business was burglarized. Cash was reported as stolen. There are no current suspects in this case. Domestic disturbance involving a juvenile assailant was reported. The case was forwarded to the juvenile department. Another domestic disturbance was reported that involved an adult and a mother and a daughter. A suspect was arrested in the case where it has been forwarded to the District Attorney's Office. So one big note, summer's here. There's no way about it. Like I said, we appreciate all the phone calls, all the assistance, everything that we can get to help us. So it's greatly appreciated. So there's multiple ways to contact nine one one, whether it be emergency, non-emergency, through text, through voicemails, we're available. So we want to make sure that we get the praise to our community and the awesome job that they do in helping us locate these criminals. So I will answer any questions if there are.
The question's going to be the same one every month as we're seeing that. I mean, this is, there was some pretty big calls. Where are we at with our new officers?
So I can tell you, we lost a deputy due to an unforeseen circumstance. So we had to fill that position, but he is on track for recovery and he should be returning within the next couple of weeks. And I'll bring our third deputy in. And the fourth one should be active and ready to go tentatively by July first. So we should have all four positions ready to go.
So it looks like we're maybe getting the third, like, June-ish?
Probably a couple of weeks. It's a, I guess it gets cleared for service so he can return to work. So that's.
So June-ish for third, hopefully by July one.
July first, the fourth will be here. Yeah.
Good. Because the fourth of July is.
Oh, and we, I've been.
It's going to be hopping.
Been talking with the sheriff about things to do and, you know, I tell him, hey, our mayor's out there. We're personally, everybody's come to Rockaway Beach, so we got to be ready. So looking forward to it.
You're taking something. No, you know, I know that there was a car break-in at the boardway parking lot. But it was really helpful because Public Works had installed some security cameras. And they have installed them very well because I walk that almost every day. And I had no clue where it was myself. Don't tell anyone.
This is another one of those things for, in daylight and they smashed the window to get into the vehicle. The criminals aren't scared or nervous.
And the parking lot was full, so they did it with ten other cars right by it. Yeah. But I wanted to thank Public Works too for installing those security cameras.
They got me that video pretty quick after that too. So I was.
And I would just add, this is a common problem at all parking areas for scenic destinations. So I've been in Hawaii where you drive into the parking lot and there's broken glass all over the parking lot. You know, this isn't a good parking lot to leave the car unattended because they've already been there and done their thing and they're likely lurking around. So we need to, we need to work on it. I'm glad we got the cameras, but it's a challenge everywhere.
Such a quick transaction too, because they, anybody can get a window breaker tool. They can smash your window and be gone in thirty seconds. They see what they want, they'll smash and grab. So.
Goodness for security cameras.
I want all the people to see how many calls you guys actually go on. We've got six pages just like this of all the calls you guys went on just this month.
So that can be calls for service or self-initiated calls, like, you know, us making contact with peoples in the park, stopping people on the sidewalk.
But you're out there doing something.
At times.
This is the largest one I've ever seen.
It is.
And it's full. All these pages are full of where they've stopped. That's the end of April calls. So you're doing your job.
That's, that's what I like to hear. I mean, we appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Grogan. All right. The Chair recognizes Superintendent Dan Emerson to report for Public Works.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager Shepherd. So we will start with Public Works report and the water treatment and distribution. Though summer's approaching fast, staff are preparing for increased demands. We focused both on operations and city's appearance. We painted parking curbs, sidewalk or crosswalks, stop lines, one-way arrows, no parking zones, handicap spots and parking stripes. So our fire hydrants were also repainted to enhance visibility. These are often struck by accident, usually by tourists. At the water treatment plant, staff continues routine state required water sampling. These can, these do include continuous, daily, monthly, quarterly and annual water samples to monitor our system's performance and catch early signs of degradation. Field crews also completed locates, ten scheduled water shut offs and repairs of service leaks near three nineteen North Miller and Northeast twenty second. Moving down to wastewater treatment and collection system. The sewer plant received upgrades, including new sludge discharge piping to the lagoon. Crews completed scheduled cleaning on all lift stations and resolved a blockage on Easy Street. At North Forest Loa Station, the pump was pulled to clear a blockage on pump one. The White Dove List Station had a failed check valve. I wrote that it's replaced, but I know it wasn't. We have purchased a replacement and that's being scheduled. Additionally, staff assisted in repairing a private sewer service at ten thirty five North Pacific Street. And after we've conducted final camera inspections, falling clean. Props goes to the homeowner at ten thirty five North Pacific. Great job for repairing that. Roads and parks. Staff freshed the lost concrete and painted trip hazards and fills bigger part. Sprinklers were shut off and marked in preparation for the Easter egg hunt. Could have been fun. The Wayside Beach access project has been completed. It's opened up and I think it's been received well. Other work includes parking lot striping at City Hall. We gravel, graveling roads off South Second Street. Asphalt pothole filling at South Third and Anchor, North Fifth and Pacific, Coral Street, some up on North Slope Way and North Second. We've installed pest control device at the health department, improving school bus stops parking at South Second Dolphin Street. Managed for the boardwalk trail. This includes graffiti removal when noticed. Sign cleaning and brush dreaming. We will be installing more cameras soon. Cleaning signs, staff cleaned signs throughout Lake Lidl. Poured a slab from Memorial Bench at Northwest Sixteenth. Worked with the Lions Club and created a spot on South Second by the wayside for the Weenawagon. And we completed annual fire extinguisher checks, both around town and at City Hall's fire suppression inspection in the elevator. Also, staff purchased new steam cleaner for cleaning equipment. And then I try, I always talk about stuff we've done, not future, but as part of a capital improvement plan, the road slurry seal is scheduled for May twentieth and the twenty first. So we want to prepare homeowners and tourists. But the work will be on North Miller Street, starting from Northwest Thirteenth going to Northwest Nineteenth, North Third on North Dolphin to North Falcon and South Anchor from South Third to South Second. Thank you for the opportunity. Are there any questions?
I want to thank you and the whole Public Works Department and the city for the transparency you have with our drinking water. Now there's a link on the, on the Public Works page that takes directly to Oregon Health Authority and all of our water reporting and data. And I used to meet one-on-one with people and show them how to look that up. And now all they have to do is go to our city website, the Public Works, click on that link. And in about three seconds, they can look up anything they want to know about Rockaway's drinking water and every other drinking water system in the state of Rockaway and about another, I mean, in the state of Oregon in about another three minutes. And so thank you for that amount of transparency to our public.
All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Emerson. The floor is yours, City Manager Shepherd.
All right. Excellent. In case anyone hasn't noticed yet, we have a packed meeting tonight. That's for sure. See if I get, never can go the right way. All right. Yeah, packed meeting tonight. We have, after I'm done, we'll have two public hearings. And then we've got ten resolutions for the council to consider. We already adopted a resolution with the consent agenda. So it's going to be, it's going to be a busy night. And as part of the consent agenda was Resolution twenty nine for the year, which was to move the regular city council meeting from the thirteenth to the twentieth of August. There didn't seem to be any conflicts with the city council members' schedule and staff likes to have a little more time in the heart of summer to get some more work done. So after I'm done, like I said, we'll have two, we'll hold two public hearings. The first on the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds. The city expects to receive about twenty thousand dollars this year in state revenue sharing funds. And we're going to put that towards our community grant program. And then our second public hearing is on the approved budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six. The Budget Committee approved the proposed budget. Their April twenty third meeting, Budget Committee meeting. And the council has the opportunity tonight to adopt extra budget. We sat through a nice presentation on our source water protection plan. Council has the opportunity to adopt that tonight. The next steps will be to send that off to the Oregon Health Authority and DEQ for review and approval. Then we can apply and get our grant reimbursement for fifty thousand dollars. It's cost to produce that source water protection plan. And then we'll kick off our Forest Stewardship Plan Development hearing real shortly. Resolution twenty four is to extend the health department's lease. I think most people know they lease out a part of our building for their health clinic. Their lease is up June of this year. So we've proposed a five-year extension through June two thousand thirty. We're going to increase their monthly payment by twenty four percent. That's an inflationary adjustment. And then make sure they're paying their fair share of utilities, which in this building for them will be about two hundred and five dollars per month for water, sewer and power. Resolution twenties reaffirm, reaffirm the city's reserve funds. State law requires we review these funds every ten years. A lot of cities reaffirm their reserve funds every year during their budget process. And this is the second year in a row we will be doing that. And the city has, the city has five reserve funds. And then Resolution number twenty one, we'll elect to receive our state revenue sharing funds. Like I said, we'll, we'll receive about twenty thousand dollars, put it towards community's grant program. Resolution twenty two adopts the twenty five, twenty six budget. And what was nice this year was we had a, we had a five-year strategic plan that really helped us focus where the city was going to direct its funding this year and its resources. So it was great to have and I think it made the process so much better. And like I said, it was approved by the Budget Committee last month. And then we've got two grant award resolutions. First up is number twenty three is to award the large community grants. We received four grant applications. There was only money to reach, to award to four, to three of them, the top, the top three out of four. And the Planning Commission worked very hard at their meeting to select the top three. The city council will award as recommended by the Planning Commission. And so Meals for Seniors will get twenty thousand dollars for food. Fulcrum Community Resources and Rockaway Beach Business Association is awarded nineteen thousand dollars for summer movies in the park program. And then Neocani Coast Arts Music and Cultural Foundation, eighteen thousand dollars for their, to launch their. for their, to launch their music technology club. Pretty nice. And then the council discussed the marketing grants at their workshop earlier tonight. And they'll make those awards by resolution here in a minute. There's a lot of resolutions tonight. Number 25, appointment to the planning commission. Pat Olson, after many, many years of serving on the planning commission, has stepped down, and so position three is vacant. We received three applications. One was true. The council discussed the last two at the workshop. And they'll make a motion to appoint to that, to Pat's position, vacant position tonight. Council will amend their rules with Resolution 26. So the council worked very hard about two years ago to implement a new set of rules. And one of the requirements of these new rules was that every two years, the council would review those rules. And they spent the last three months doing so. And so we're ready to adopt those. And so I just have two changes to highlight. A lot of them were housekeeping, housekeeping changes to their rules. So they've increased the, the time allotted for public testimony, public hearings from three minutes to four minutes. And then during the public comment period, instead of stating the residence address or citizen's address, all we're asking for now will be their primary city of residence. So it could be Rockaway Beach, could be Pendleton. And they're also able to state if they own a property or business in Rockaway Beach. Let's see. And then the last one, I believe that's the last one tonight, Resolution 28. Authorize the city to apply for grant funding to update its transportation, transportation system plan. The last time we updated that was in 2010. So this will help us identify issues and find solutions to some of our transportation problems here in Rockaway Beach. And it's actually updating our plan is this strategic plan, Action Night of 1.1. So hopefully we get that, get that started. That can be up to a two-year process to update a transportation system plan. All right, so now some updates. So we've talked a lot over the last year plus about all of the grant applications we've applied for towards the acquisition of the lower half of the Jettie Creek watershed. And, and we hope it's the first of many, but we do have finally, final official word that we did receive our first grant from the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board for 1.422 million towards purchase of the Jettie Creek watershed. So that's, that's great news. Finance Director Marnie Johnston published her third quarter financial reports on our website. She'll check it out. And she highlighted the last few years of transient, transient lodging tax revenue. I think it's, it's worth a read. We're accepting applications for the Fourth of July parade, accepting nominations for Grand Marshall and Volunteer of the Year. Those are both on our website as well. And then Superintendent Emerson talked about some of the road resurfacing projects taking place next week. So on, on Tuesday, May 20th, and also on Wednesday, May 23rd, but May 21st, usually we've got a few projects going. So on Tuesday, they're doing a section, Anchor Street between South Third and South Fourth. On North Miller Street, they'll be resurfacing a section between Northwest Thirteenth and Northwest, Northwest Sixteenth. And then on North Third, they'll resurface between North Dolphin and North Falcon. And then the next day on the 21st, Anchor Street between South Fourth and South Fifth. And then back to Miller Street between North Sixteenth and Northwest Nineteenth. So anyway, you can find these online on the city's Facebook page. If you live in the area, you're gonna receive the mailed copy of these notices. They'll be signs out. And then it's all weather dependent too, so it could, it could change, of course. But those, those, those five projects, those are all part of the Streets Capital Improvement Plan the council adopted last year. And then lastly, the public meetings for May and June, a lot of the usual suspects here, except for May 17th. There'll be a nice David's Chair kickoff ceremony at St. Mary's by the Sea at 10:00 AM. And I believe St. Mary's will be providing some snacks and the city will provide a sound system. And there'll be, I hear, three, two or three additional David's Chairs for use. So it should be, it should be a fun event Saturday morning. And that is, that is my presentation for you tonight.
All right, thank you, City Manager Shepherd.
I, I just want to highlight again, because you mentioned the 1,400,000 grand that that you have, we have pending and received and pending for the drinking watershed. And going back to the speaker, our consultant, who talked about the source water protection plan and the city applied for and received a $60,000 grant, which is kind of dwarfed by that 1 million, but and then we, cities applied for and, and is, has received an additional 60 or 70,000 dollar grant to make a plan to manage the watershed. It, it's just phenomenal how much money the staff saves the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. All right, so Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to hold a public hearing to receive public comment regarding the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. All documents have been available for inspection as required by state statute. At this time, I open the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public input regarding the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. I have the signup sheet here. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment, can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raised hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have folks watching remotely who wish to comment? All right. Since there are no speakers, I will close the public hearing at this time. The Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to hold a public hearing to receive public testimony on the budget approved by the Budget Committee. All documents have been available for inspection as required by the state statute. I open the public hearing at this time. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public testimony on the budget approved by the Budget Committee. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raised hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have folks watching? Since there are no speakers, I will close the public hearing at this time. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I do have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raised hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have folks watching remotely who would like to be added? Thank you. The chair recognizes Laird Heater.
Oh.
Yeah. Laird, come on down.
I didn't hear half that, but that's okay. I was cutting basics.
All right, well, state your full name and address for the record. You got, you got four.
I didn't, Laird Heater, I'm at 715, or 725, South, our Breaker, South Breaker. And four to three years ago, I purchased a couple of chavins, but was a Gold Coast Hotel on South Seventh. Since then, we've rented the larger half to a local, to local renters full, full-time. Now I'm on my third generation of family because he's in here. We treasure the parades, fireworks, beach cleanups, and miss, miss the bumper cars, bowling alley, and Joe and the dump tank. As, as the town has grown, much of the old remains and new traditions are being established. What, what we are losing, however, is our night sky. It used to be you could see unblemished galaxies on any clear night. However, that is changing. With growth, there's come more nightlights. The sky is becoming polluted, and too many of these properties have open lights that shine on their neighbors, and many are on seven days a week, even when the properties are vacant for weeks of the kind. My, my renter who worships the beauty and solitude has to walk out to the beachfront just to get away from the worst of the glare. This is not just Rockaway. This, there is an entire worldwide movement to, to address light pollution. The movement is called Dark Sky. And it's not only benefits residents, but it's becoming a draw for tourists. I put a comprehensive packet together that includes even a couple of ordinances. It, it's mainly about reducing the, the amount of light and directing the light downwards. Definitely not at, at your neighbors. Warm white bulbs versus daylight. What about the bad guys? Constant lights, odd lights are basically ignored. And everybody can see where the shadows are versus a sudden burst of light such as a motion detector. And interesting, two bright lights create two darker shadows, and your eyes don't adjust. So it's easier to hide. What can we do? We, we have an outdated limit ordinance in Rockaway that could, could be amended to bring up more current standards. I've also been informed that the state is adopting standards to address all street lighting on Highway 101 to, to these standards. How to implement the transition? Effective immediately, say within 30 days, any residence while not occupied shall not display, display any outdoor lighting. July 1st, just change some bulbs. All exterior fixtures must be warm white or soft white, not exceeding 600 lumens. That's a 60-watt bulb, ideally 40. All motion detector and any security light must be adjusted so they don't trespass. And that can basically be accomplished by putting the lights not only down, but like on my house back against the building. By September 1st, fixtures have, that have vertical or top panels that allow light to be either covered, painted over, or replaced with the panels. I know the thought of buying new fixtures must be daunting, but I have a few thoughts that should help. The lights would be on for mere minutes versus hours. LEDs are about 75% more efficient than normal lights, and fewer watts means fewer dollars. But for those buying lights, I found them as low as $29 at Home Depot. They have a $65 polycarbon in it, that won't be affected by salt air. And I know this will absorb it for a minute, so I have got some packets for people if, if they want them. And feel free just to look up Dark Sky. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Robert Carson. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Bob Larson, White River Avenue, Nadana Beach. I'm reading some comments that Nancy Webster drafted regarding your Rockaway Beach City Council meetings and workshop last month. During recent City of Rockaway Beach City Council workshop and council meetings, statements were made regarding North Coast Communities for Watershed Protections application for a grant. I, Nancy Webster, would like to take this opportunity to speak publicly in order to clarify and to thank the city for their efforts to safeguard the Jettie Creek watershed. But I'd like to clarify some of the comments that were made. City Statement Number One, at the workshop, the following was stated. First of all, they applied to hold a community training for a project that has already been accomplished and is mostly complete, and, and that is by our drinking watershed. So the response to that would be there is still work needed to secure the Jettie Creek watershed, including the upper watershed area. The public needs to clearly understand that the aquifer beneath the Nadana Beach neighborhood serves as the backup drinking water source for the city of Rockaway Beach. Protecting our drinking water is not just a matter of policy. It's a shared responsibility, and coming together to defend it is both urgent and achievable. City Statement Number Two, a city councillor raised concerns about using taxpayer funds to discuss timber companies, characterizing it as a red flag. The comment to that would be industrial timber operations, such as clearcutting and pesticide application, are well-documented contributors to a degraded drinking water quality in this region. Transparent, informed dialogue is essential for responsible long-term drinking water management. City Statement Number Three, NCCWP caused a delay in the appeal to Luba of the city council decision regarding the Nadawave PUD. Response to that would be, NCCWP did not file the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals regarding the Nadawave land unit development. The appeal was filed by the Oregon Shores Conservation Coalition, which is represented by the Crag Law Center. Furthermore, NCCWP did not request additional documentation. Last January, the attorney representing Nadawave PUD missed the deadline to intervene in the Luba case, but later filed. Luba reviewed his late request, but it was denied. City Statement Number Four, a city councillor stated that, quote, "Members of NCCWP, Nancy Webster, Daniel Howard, and Lindsay Madison spoke against the city, joining the watershed working group and negotiating for the purchase of the watershed." Response to that would be Daniel Lindsay and Nancy Webster each publicly and consistently voiced support for the city acquiring its drinking water watershed. Our positions are well documented and reflect a shared commitment to long-term drinking water security. City Statement Five, Nancy Webster refused to endorse the city's grant application to buy the watershed. In response, when I, Nancy Webster, was presented with the opportunity to sign on to the grant application, I believed that there was not enough detailed, well-researched information for me to make a fully informed decision. I was also concerned.
You said, please wrap.
...land parade. I did reach out to Sustainable Northwest, North Coast Land Conservancy and the City of Rockaway Beach about my concerns.
Thank you.
My time, are you finished?
That's not an option.
I wanted to give him my spot. No, sorry. I was gonna give you my time, but I'm not allowed.
Okay, the chair recognizes Nancy Webster. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Thank you for an opportunity. I'm Nancy Webster, and I live in Rockaway Beach. This, I'm gonna follow up with Bob, my partner, was presenting, and so city statement number six. Nancy Webster, North Coast Communities for Watershed Protection, has also written letters to Oregon Department of Geology asking them to stop the city from moving buildings up to the hill, the Fire Department Emergency Center. I have never written letters to Doggami, nor talked with them. I did privately talk with a licensed geologist from Seaside. I asked him about the risk in all of the hills behind the city, including the Jettie Creek watershed. His opinion, this is high-risk areas, was that the city should talk with a licensed geologist before buying any of these properties. I have copied various Doggami slide maps and emailed them to the city. City Statement Number Seven. NCCWP has gotten all kinds of grants to pay for things, and they're just a special project of Fulcrum. It's listed on their webpage, and it's extra money. I do appreciate Fulcrum. NCCWP uses grants that, to fund events and projects. Day-to-day operations are primarily funded by ongoing citizen donations. Fulcrum Community Resources is our 501-3C fiscal sponsor and charges us 5% overhead for any donations they receive that are directed to NCCWP. Thank you, Fulcrum. City Statement Number X Eight, the city, NCCWP was putting out misinformation. I want to really be clear on this, and our goal is always to speak the truth. Information from what comes under our webpage or on our web, web information is vetted before being sent out on email. We rely on recognized and We rely on recognized and accredited scientists who volunteer to verify our information. Here are some of these individuals. Trigisteen, PhD, Emeritus Forest Professor Ecology. Dr. Dee Gunderson, Toxicologist, Emeritus Professor at Pacific University. Ernie Mimi, Scientist and Natural Resource Economist and President of Natural Resources Economics. Herb Hammond, Licensed Forester at British Columbia. Steve King, Retired Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Biologist. He was the head of Salmon Recovery. Dale Simmons and Tom Horning, Registered Professional Geologist in Oregon. Steve Padere, Oregon Wild. Chris Farrar, Retired Federal Hydrologist. I really appreciate that these individuals have volunteered for us over the years and helped back up our information. Depending on the source, one can find conflicting information about forestry practices, water quality, toxicology. What I've learned, talking with my favorite ODF forester, is that we can agree to disagree, but still continue to exchange ideas in a civil manner. So if you have questions about what we are saying, please ask. North Coast communities firmly believe that safe drinking water and clean air are part of the public trust that we are entitled to. City statement number nine, there was concerns that the University of Oregon Landscape Architecture project was not vetted first with the city before they started working on this project. In truth, the city, the professor contacted the city three different times, three different city employees, asking them if they could find time to meet with him and the students. All three said that they could not at this point. Well, the benefit of all this was that luckily then they ended up with Richard and I, and we were able to work, you know, meet with them and take them on hikes and walks and spent two full days with them and then continued the relationship, which ended in--
Nancy, please wrap it up.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time and thanks for, I really, we now have an exhibit at the Rockaway Library for--
Nancy.
--pictures. Thank you.
The chair recognizes John Orloff. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four, it turns red. You know the result of turning red.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you for your indulgence. I'm John Orloff. I live at 340 North Slope Way in Rockaway Beach, and I've lived there for about 19 years. There are two traffic hazards that I think should be mitigated on Highway 101. One at the northeast corner of the intersection of 101 and Second Avenue, and another one at the northeast corner of 101 and Third Avenue, which is right out front here. The problem is that when cars park in front of the entrance to the tiebreaker restaurant or the city hall, it is very difficult to see traffic coming south on 101 when you're trying to turn left onto 101. I think if parking were not permitted for a distance of at least one car length from each of these intersections, that it would be much safer for all the drivers trying to pull out onto either, onto 101 from either Second Avenue or Third Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Pam Hiller. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. Three minutes, it turns yellow. Four minutes, it turns red.
It's already red, does that mean I--
We don't, we don't count your introduction to on your four minutes. That's a preview. A gift from the city.
Thank you. Pam Hiller, I live at 17, wait, 1075 North Peter Creek Avenue. I have a post office box, so I never use my address. So the reason I'm coming to see you today is I'm back. We're having our third annual summer picnic, and I'm wanting to invite you. And I know I'm supposed to stay by the microphone, but, sorry. Anyway--
It's in my calendar.
I know if I don't get you soon enough, people will put it on their calendar, and that's what they need.
Thank you.
And I get more further people too. So anyway, one of the things that we want to do this year is we're going to be promote, trying to promote businesses in Tillamook County, in Rockaway, wherever. I'm going to be coming to your door, knocking on your door for t-shirts. We're trying to get a t-shirt for everybody from businesses. We want to advertise businesses in our communities. We want to get the information out so that people will do shopping. We are okay with that. And please, please invite anybody who wants-- And the other thing I have to say is I've been coming to city council for a little while, couple of years, three, four years, and I am so pleased with the amount of work that the city and the citizens and people do to include people with disabilities and people with intellectual disabilities. I've watched it grow and it's becoming more and more normal stuff, not, this is special because people want to be normal. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come. It is, oh my gosh, I didn't tell you this. It's June 26th. It's a Thursday. We meet from 11 to 3:00, and it's over at Esther-- Phyllis Baker. Cut out. Some person, you know who it is. What the Easter egg was. Phyllis Baker. Yes, Phyllis Baker, thank you, it's on here too. So anyway, thank you, and please come and enjoy. We have a blast, and we feed you too. So, all right. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. All right, the chair recognizes Goldie C. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. You know the drill, three minutes and then four minutes and you're out of here.
I thought I saw something that we don't have to say our actual physical addresses.
We haven't adopted the new rules yet.
Oh. I live at 216 South Beacon Street in Rockaway Beach, and I came just to share a little bit of how much I've appreciated. I've only been here a little over nine years, but I've really appreciated the work that NCCWP does, the Y group, Nancy's group. I've been going to those meetings and I really appreciate it. It's really expanded my understanding of the ecosystem out here on the coast. I honestly believe that this is a really precious, precious, obviously coastal lands are precious, but Oregon's precious because they might be one of the only places in the whole wide world that you're not allowed to have private beach. You have to share it, but that is really, really unique planet loss. And so it maybe opens the thinking or an idea that we would work as hard as we could to preserve the naturalness of not just Rockaway and our towns, but the whole coast, and maybe teach each other how to do it. Because in the end, that would really, really stand out as being a really good tourist haul because people could come see a pristine, a tidal pool because those are disappearing. I came from the East Coast. You don't see a tidal pool. I always was looking for one as a child, but there's nothing in them. There's not much stuff. I might have seen starfish when I was about nine once because we landed on this like little teeny plot of land in the middle of the Salt River, Indian River inlet, you know, inlet that's down in Delaware. And there were starfish there because no people were there and it was like, wasn't even as big, maybe as big as this room, a little island. And, but it was really, and that was then, that's like the 60s, so now here we are, and we still have all this stuff. So Nancy's group has helped me get my brain around this, and it's really nice to have fresh water to drink too. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Jean Schultz. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. Three minutes, it turns yellow. Four minutes, it turns red.
Yeah, okay. 340 North Slope Way, Jean Schultz. And I'm just here to tell you that if you want to do more about figuring out about the watershed and so forth, we at the library, the Rockaway Beach Library, have allowed a display from Nancy Webster's team was there putting it up the other day with me. And so I encourage people to come down there. There's lots of things posted, pictures, there's lots of displays on the trifold, and there are some pamphlets that you can read while you're there in the library. So come and make up your own line about it, okay? And I will also tell you that I have stepped down from being president of the North Federal Library, but they're probably going to keep me on to write grant proposals. Thank you.
Charles.
Can I ask her a quick question?
All right, well, thank you all for being engaged in city government and sharing your thoughts and opinions this evening. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. Consideration of Resolution 2025-19 approves the Source Water Protection Plan. This resolution approves the final Source Water Protection Plan. If the council approves the plan, it will be submitted to the State of Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and Oregon Health Authority for approval. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to city manager Shepard will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I do have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anyone watching remotely for public comment on Resolution 2025-19? And we have nobody signed up on the comment sheet, so the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-19 approves the Source Water Protection Plan.
I make a motion that the city council approve the Source Water Protection Plan in Resolution 2025-19.
Second. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-19 approving the Source Water Protection Plan. Is there any discussion from council?
I just want to remind people, the consultant brought this up, but I just want to remind people, this is a draft plan. It goes to DEQ and OHA for their input in it, and then it'll come back again to us for the final approval. So you'll see another round of this.
All right, since there is no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-20, a resolution reviewing and continuing reserve funds. This resolution affirms that the city has reviewed and sees the need to continue its reserve funds. Public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. Electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody online? All right. The chair will entertain, I should say, we didn't have anybody signed up on the sheet as well as virtually. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-20, a resolution reviewing and continuing reserve funds. I move to approve Resolution 2025-20. Second.
I second the motion.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-20, a resolution reviewing and continuing reserve funds. Is there any discussion from council? Since there is no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-21, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. This resolution meets the state requirements that the city declare its intent to receive its share of state revenues for fiscal year 2025-2026. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-21, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
And we approve Resolution 2025-21.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-21, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Is there any discussion from council?
No, just a little explanation. This is a routine thing that's required by the state that we have to do every budget
Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-22, adopting the budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes for fiscal year 2025-2026. The Budget Committee approved the 2025-2026 budget, and it is now before the council for adoption. This one resolution contains all four actions required. It adopts the budget, appropriates funds, and imposes and categorizes taxes for fiscal year 2025-2026. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-22, adopting the budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes for fiscal year 2025-2026.
I move that we, excuse me, I move that we approve, I'm sorry, I lost my place.
Resolution 2025-22.
20, 25-22, adopting the budget, making appropriations, imposing the category tax of the fiscal year 2025-2026.
Second.
I second it.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-22, adopting the budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes for fiscal year 2025-2026. Is there any discussion from council?
Just thanks to the Budget Committee. It's composed of equal numbers of citizens and residents and council members, and they did a lot of good work.
Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-23, approving awards for the 2024-2025 Large Community Grant Program. Planning Commission reviewed applications based on established grant evaluation criteria and has made funding recommendations to the city council. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I do have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anyone watching remotely for public comment on Resolution 2025-23? Since we have no one for comment, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-23, approving awards for the 2024-2025 Large Community Grant Program.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-23.
Second.
I second it.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-23, approving awards for the 2024-2025 Large Community Grant Program. Is there any discussion from council? We did the small community grant. This was the large, larger-sized request. New process this year. I think it worked very well, and I want to just thank publicly the Planning Commission for all the effort they put into both the small and the large community grant. Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-24, approving the First Amendment to the Commercial Lease Agreement with Tillamook County for their health clinic. Tillamook County wishes to continue to lease space in city hall for their health clinic. This amendment to the current agreement extends the lease for another five years, provides an inflationary adjustment for rent, and simplifies utility billing and charges. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. Electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor-- who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody watching remote? Since we have no one signed up to speak, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-24 Approving the First Amendment to the Commercial Lease Agreement with Tillamook County for their health clinic.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-24 and approve the First Amendment to the commercial lease agreement with the Tillamook County Health Clinic.
Second motion.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-24 Approving the First Amendment to the Commercial Lease Agreement with Tillamook County for their health clinic. Is there any discussion?
Just in case people don't know, it's housed on this first floor here, and I think Thursdays is when they're open.
And the door is to Anchor Street.
Facing the fire department, yeah.
Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-25 Making an Appointment to the Planning Commission to Fill Vacant Position Three. We have two qualified candidates for Planning Commission Position Three, Penny Cole and Richard Martindale. Penny Cole lives within the city limits and Richard Martindale lives outside of city limits but within the urban growth boundary. I genuinely appreciate the willingness to volunteer to serve our community in this capacity. Thank you both. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody remotely? All right. Well, during our workshop, council shared their thoughts on the applicants, and in consideration of the council's comments and my own evaluation, I nominate Penny Cole for Planning Commission Position Two. And the chair will entertain a motion to amend Resolution 2025-25 to insert the name Penny Cole in Section One.
That would be position three.
Oh. Say that again?
Position three.
To insert the name Penny Cole in Section One?
No, in position three, you said position two.
Oh, did I?
Yes.
Oh, okay, position three. Thank you. I nominate Penny Cole for Planning Commission Position Three. That was harder than it needed to be. All right. I will now entertain a motion to amend Resolution 2025-25 to insert the name Penny Cole in Section One.
I make a motion that, if I can get this right, I make a motion that we insert the name Penny Cole in Section One for position number three on Planning Commission.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we will amend Resolution 2025-25 to insert the name Penny Cole in Section One. Is there any discussion from council?
No, Penny Cole is present tonight, and we move fast here in Rockaway. So what that means is this Thursday, or not this Thursday, but the third Thursday at the Planning Commission meeting.
Tomorrow night.
That is this Thursday. You will be seated up here, and our city planner will get you up to speed.
So since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. The chair will now entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve amended Resolution 2025-25 Appointing Penny Cole to the Planning Commission to fill vacant position three.
I make a motion to.
One of us went to sleep today.
No, you go ahead.
I make a motion to nominate Penny Cole for the position number three on the Planning Commission.
We need a motion to approve the amended Resolution 2025-25.
I move that we amend it.
Resolution 2025-25.
Twenty-five. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves amended Resolution 2025-25 Appointing Penny Cole to the Planning Commission to fill vacant position three. Is there any discussion from council? Since there's no discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-26 Amending City Council Rules and Procedures. This resolution approves amendments to the council meeting rules and procedures. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. Electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I do have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody wishing to make comment? All right. Since there are nobody signed up to comment, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-26 Amending City Council Rules and Procedures.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-26.
Second?
I second it.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-26 Amending City Council Rules and Procedures. Is there any discussion?
No, just point out the two big changes is one, they get four minutes instead of three minutes, and the second change is they can state generally where they live without giving the exact address now.
Since there is no further discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-27 Everybody should have this sheet up.
Yeah, just a reminder. So City Recorder Thompson drafted a motion based on the consensus from tonight's earlier workshop.
Thank you. Consideration of Resolution 2025-27 Approving Awards for the 2024-2025 Offseason Tourism Marketing Grant Program. This resolution authorizes awards for the 2024-2025 Fiscal Year Offseason Marketing and Promotion Grant. This grant is funded with lodging tax collected by the city and is administered by the Tillamook Coast Visit Association. Council reviewed applications in the workshop and may now consider granting awards. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. Electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon. Do we have anybody indicating? Okay. All right. First, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council amend Resolution 2025-27 to insert in Section One the recipients and grant amounts as follows. Neokani Coast Arts Music and Cultural Foundation for $3,000, Green Coast Market $3,000, and Jiu-Jitsu 101 Oregon Coast for $3,000.
I move to amend Resolution Number 2025-27 to insert in Section One the recipients and grant amounts as follows. Neokani Coast Arts Music and Cultural Foundation for $3,000, Green Coast Market for $3,000, and Jiu-Jitsu 101 Oregon Coast for $3,000. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council amends Resolution Number 2025-27 to insert in Section One the recipients and grant amounts as follows. Neokani Coast Arts Music and Cultural Foundation for $3,000, Green Coast Market $3,000, and Jiu-Jitsu 101 Oregon Coast for $3,000. Do I have any discussion? All right. Let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The chair will now entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve amended Resolution 2025-27.
I make a motion that the city council approve the amended Resolution 2025-27 for the marketing grant program.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Revolution, amended Resolution 2025-27 Approving Awards for the 2024-2025 Offseason Tourism Marketing. Is there any discussion?
These are funded by TLT Tax, and there are some specific requirements the state legislature requires for grants that are funded by TLT Tax, and it'll be nice to see what these organizations do with it.
Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-28 Endorsing a State of Oregon Transportation and Growth Management Grant Application for a Transportation Plan Update. This resolution provides endorsement of an application for a transportation and growth management grant to update the city's transportation system plan. Public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raised hand icon. Do we have anybody watching remotely? All right. We have nobody for comment. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-28 Endorsing a State of Oregon Transportation and Growth Management Grant Application for a Transportation Plan Update.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-28 Endorsing a State of Oregon Transportation and Growth Management Grant Application for a Transportation System Plan Update.
Second?
Second.
It is moved and seconded that the Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-28 Endorsing a State of Oregon Transportation and Growth Management Grant Application for a Transportation Plan Update. Is there any discussion from council?
Our current, soon expiring, transportation plan is on the city website, and I think if people look at it, they will see that the city has systematically just ticked off almost everything that's on that transportation plan, and the few things that are left are things that are really not in the city's purview. They involve more state and federal government than the city. So thanks to the city again for tackling this transportation plan.
Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, and that brings us to council comments. Counsel President Cheek.
Well, it's good to be back up here. I've been gone for several months. Getting a new knee. But it's nice to see the same faces sitting here. Everyone's smiling and happy this evening. It's good.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Counselor Conroff?
I don't have a whole lot. I'm just excited for summer, and I feel like there's a lot of really exciting things that are going to be happening, and I'm very excited for our new ladder truck and new officers because Rockaway's busy, and I was looking at the mayor's report, and it's just more things that we need more officers for. So it's hopefully going to be a good and exciting summer, and yeah, lots of fun things happening, and welcome back, Penny.
Thank you.
Counselor Martine?
Well, first of all, I'm glad to have my partner in council meetings next to me.
Thank you.
Also, this picnic that the city's hosting was awesome. I've done them before, and very important that we all go to it. Thank you.
Well, again, it's.
Yeah, I want to remind everyone that Saturday at 10:00, there's the kickoff for the David's Chair, and so please attend that. Also, Oregon Coast Visitors Association has a new transportation bus coming from Portland and it has a route going through Astoria and stopping in Rockaway in the morning and then back in the evening, so tourists will be able to come to the beach. And hopefully that will encourage more shopping and eating in the stores, because if they're on the bus, they can't bring a whole lot of food with them. And so you want to know more about that, you can visit the Oregon Coast Visitors Association website, and they have all the information on there. And then I started last month, I started a spotlight on businesses, and just real quickly, like one thing or so about each business, because I realize several thousand people watch our city council meetings, and I started thinking, what can we city councilors do to get people into our businesses to shop? And I think putting this quick message out helps. I've gotten a lot of feedback from it. And I see someone sitting here that was actually first on my list, Joe's Snack Shack at the Wayside. So you can get hot coffee and hot chocolate after a windy day, or you can pick up a sandwich to take out on the beach when you're walking the beach. And Simply Charming on Main Street sells new and vintage items, and they invited me in to look at what they would like for me to highlight. I appreciated the personal touch. And they make handmade soy candles, bath salts, and caramel candies, and they just got a lot of new puzzles in if you're into puzzling. Artist Sue Hennessy sells her hand-carved wooden figurines, which are amazing, at Seacrest Quest Treasures Mall and located on the west side of the railroad tracks, and Sue wanted me to say that they're carved by hand, not by electronic tools. Flamingo Gym on Highway South 101, what can I say? If you come to the beach to get shells, there probably not going to be any. Go to gems and you can pick up a shell there or a sweatshirt. Troxel's Gym and Jewelry in downtown makes jewelry and does engraving for people. So if you need a last-minute thing engraved, go by and see Jen Troxel. They also have beach bicycles and the beach wheelchair there. The Hope Chest Thrift Store is located downtown, and you can find anything there for a very reasonable price. Oregon Dew Drops is like the most unique thing ever. They catch rainwater from Oregon, put it in light bulbs with a nice combined brass temple bell from India as a hanger and makes wonderful gifts. So anyway, that's the spotlight on businesses for this month.
Thank you. All right. Next slide, please. Here's my picture of volunteering. Volunteering offers significant personal and community benefits, impacting mental and physical well-being, career prospects, and social connections. It provides a sense of purpose, boosts self-esteem, and can improve job prospects. Additionally, volunteering strengthens communities by addressing needs and fostering social cohesion. Volunteerism is strong in Rockaway Beach, and we have the Rockaway Beach Volunteers matching community members with opportunities to make a difference in Rockaway Beach. If you're not on their list of active volunteers, email therockawaybeachvolunteercoordinators@rbvolunteers1@gmail.com. This is truly a win-win opportunity. Next slide, please. This is truly a win-win opportunity. Next slide, please. We held our monthly Coffee with the Manager and Mayor on Thursday, April 24th. We included a summary of the comments shared in the meeting packet for council and community members to review and consider. Next Coffee with the Manager and Mayor is Thursday, May 22nd. We hope you will attend. It is an opportunity to meet your neighbors and share your thoughts on Rockaway Beach with city manager Shepard and me. And then the last slide. If you have ideas to share, questions, concerns about what is going on in the city of Rockaway Beach, or what you are hearing or seeing on social media, please email me at cmcneely@corp.us. I would welcome the opportunity to meet with you. And so thanks for your time and attention this evening. I'm still listening, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I finally got one in.
It's moved and seconded. Let's vote. Council President Chief.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
We are adjourned at 7:47 on Wednesday, May 14th, 2025.